And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera and the council chair just set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the budget allegiance. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Here.
Councillor Dilaba.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Kennedy. Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Riche.
Here.
Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Coram present.
We have one presentation tonight from City Comptroller Angela Gray.
Good evening, Council.
Hey, Angela, I'm sorry. Nicole Kennedy has resigned from council, so she's not here. Thank you, Angela. Go ahead again.
Sure, thank you. Included with tonight's agenda was the debt or is the debt presentation. Just to run through this at a high level, I've put together the six years of debt history by fund. So the blue bar on the chart titled Debt Outstanding by Fund represents our general fund debt. The orange is the sewer fund and the gray is the water fund. The water fund debt is probably the easiest to talk about. That has a bond that it will be paid down and is being paid down. General fund, we started in 2020 with $3.9 million of bonds outstanding and debt outstanding within the general fund. At the end of 2022, that number had dropped to 2.3 million outstanding in the general fund. In 2023, council authorized and it was issued a bond anticipation note in the amount of 4. almost $2 million. And so because the sewer fund debt is taking up a lot more room on this chart, that kind of gets lost. But if you do look, there is a big jump of, not a big, but there is a jump in debt in the general fund as well, starting in 2023. So turning to the next page, that just pictorially shows where the debt is. Turning to the next page, what you will see is a breakdown of the debt between bond anticipation notes and also bonds. And so we have a bond that's been outstanding for a bit, a band, rather, I apologize, titled internally as a 2021 Ready Project. This was the 5% match that the city had to pay on the initial grant for the Ready Project. In 2023, the city authorized, and again, we did close on a bond anticipation note in the amount of $4,188,027. Typically, a band has a five-year window in which there should be payback. The first year, we would pay interest only on that band. The interest on that particular one is 4.15%. And then we'll have to work through paying principal beginning in 2025. And that we will start to see come into the budget in the 2025 year. Looking down under the bond category, there are three improvement bonds outstanding. There's nothing on those three bonds that we can do to restructure them. And so the balance outstanding anticipated at the end of 2023 is the far-right column, which would add to about 1.5 million roughly. We also in 2022 finalized the debt on the sewer project, so 0%. We have $19.6 million that was finalized. And at the end of 2023, we would expect $18.9 million outstanding. The second portion of funding was not interest-free. The interest does change over the 30 years of repayment. And so when we look at the average interest rate on that debt, it's 4.5%. Starting at a little over 3 and ending a little over 5, I believe, is the trend on that interest. And so we would expect about $12.4 million outstanding of that at the end of the 2023 year. If you turn to the third and final slide, you will see the principal obligation by fund. Sitting inside the general fund, there's an asterisk there because the general fund borrowing essentially is what's also funding these capital projects. So that's, I just wanted to point that out. When we look at these numbers, that's, there's also capital project funding going on in these, in terms of the bands. So you can see the budgetary needs going from 2023 through 2024 and 2025. The largest part of that in the 2024 and 2025 years will be the sewer debt, which is approximately $1 million per year in payments. This schedule, I just want to point out, is principal only. And there is interest also required in the budgets for this debt. In terms of the city, we do have a constitutional debt limit within the city. At the end of 2023, we had exhausted about almost 15% of that. And what this is based on is 7% of your five-year average of the assembled assessed value of your property. So that average value at the end of 2022, when we do this calculation for 2023, was about $20 million. Water and sewer is excluded. Our particular debt for water and sewer is excluded from this calculation. So if you're wondering how we can have debt of 30-plus million and be under our constitutional tax debt limit, it's because we exclude the water and sewer portion of that. Are there any questions? I just wanted to, you know, pause and give council a chance to do a high-level overview of the debt and ask, and just give that to you in presentation for tonight and going into the 2024 budget cycle.
Angela, I had one question. What would be the debt summary page? The maturity of the Ready Projects says 2024. We're not paying all that back in 2024, correct?
That is correct. These are bands, and when a band is issued, they are issued in one-year increments. So the 385 on the older one, our advisor for the bands is looking into that because there are some special provisions for debt issued during certain time periods during COVID, which we may be able to take advantage of on paying that one back. And then for the large one, the 4.1 million, my anticipation is we'll renew this first and then pay the interest in 2024 and then get a renewal on that before we start having to pay back the principal. When we pay back the principal on those, we typically then put them into a bond which has longer-term life that we would be able to put that over the economic life of the project.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Angela, do you see any rationale or would you be in favor of us doing a five-year study, projection for the city's finances for five years? You know, a plan, a strategy? Have you ever seen any other communities do that? I think it's recommended by the comptroller.
Yeah, I do see a lot of value in doing that, and we're currently working on the 2024 budget. And as part of putting that together, I'm not sure I even spoke with the city manager about this yet, but I do think it would be worthwhile, given where we are, to put in a schedule that attempts to illustrate a possible budget scenarios for the next five years.
But if we hired an independent firm to do that analysis, do you see a benefit to it?
It would be another set of eyes. It would be somebody external. I guess I can't weigh in either way, Councillor Riche.
Would it? I don't know. I just think it'd be a good financial strategy to have a five-year financial plan. I think it's recommended by the comptroller. I don't think it's falls within your duties to do that. I just think there's some merit to hiring an independent firm to do it. Those are my thoughts.
Okay.
I think you do a great job. I wouldn't have intended to suggest otherwise at all. Just, I just think it's a smart move to have a five-year financial plan for the future council as well as, well, it's probably, I don't know how long that would take an independent firm to do it, if there's any support for it, but certainly for future councils.
I don't disagree, and if it's something that council wants to proceed on, we would just have to allocate funding within, I would assume, the 2024 budget.
Well, we, we obviously have a 30-year payment plan. 30 years, that's a lot of debt. It's a lot of debt for our revenue. Any other questions?
No, but if you look at like the 2022 sewer bonds, the 30 million, and then later tonight when we talk about the water plant, that's another 25 million. So numbers are almost in an equal, a million-dollar payment a year. Again, it's probably coming down the road. It's gonna be scary.
Thank you, Angela.
Sure, the one thing I would ask council to give consideration to in terms of borrowing, I know staff in 2023 presented to council to borrow for long-term projects, projects that have a more than one-year useful life, I'll say that, i.e. the roof. There's, those are things that I would recommend you consider bonding for as opposed to bonding for short-term projects. We really want to do, take advantage of the ability to issue municipal bonds to pay for long-term projects instead of using current revenues to pay for those.
Is, is there any likelihood of our Moody's rating changing?
I'm unsure of that, Mayor. They haven't requested a review of anything.
Okay.
How about an update on the fund balance, too? Are you able to provide that, or do you have to wait for the audit? I'd be curious to see that. I know there was funds for a couple of things.
Sure, we presented the fund balance to council a couple of months ago, I believe. I don't have any updates beyond that. It would be pending the audit.
So the things we approved, like the roof and the fire department thing, those are, I can deduct those from there?
To make sure that we're clear, I can do an updated schedule of fund balance and pass it along through the city manager just to make sure that we are on the same page, councillor, and that all of those have been included.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you. We have one public hearing tonight regarding a local law amending Article 19 of the Augsburg City Charter entitled Transitional Provisions. And I will open that up to the public hearing now. Anyone attending in person would like to come down? You have five minutes at the podium.
Good evening. I'm Michael Tulley. I live at 214 Hamilton Street. Some of this is going to be a repeat of history I shared with you a couple of meetings ago. In 1995, I served on the City Charter Commission. After that commission ended its work and action was taken by council at that time, the next City Charter Commission was established 12 years later in 2007. I was also selected to serve in that commission, and that commission membership elected me as chair. One of the matters that we discussed in 2007 was the fact that it took, it was 12 years between charter commissions when the charter called for 10 years. And there was no language in the charter at that time that provided for any consequence to the city or city council by failing to meet this deadline. And so after exploring options, the 2007 City Charter Commission recommended to city council the language that in effect says, if you get to the end of that 10-year period, you haven't collected, selected the charter commission, beginning of the next day, the only power you have is to select the charter commission. And it wasn't intended as a punishment to shut down government. It was intended to be an incentive to stay on the timeline that was in the charter. And the city council adopted that language, and that language has been in place since that time. Now, I note in the proposal for the amending this, this language, that the consequence is eliminated. And I would suggest reconsideration of either that consequence or at least some other consequence that would again provide incentive to city council to stay the course and stay within the deadlines that the charter states. Thank you.
Mike, can I ask you a question? Because you have the experience on the commission, and you put that consequence in there. So by moving this back to the 10-year part, I don't see why we would have to remove the consequence. Just, just make it back to the 10-year mark instead, because last time, obviously, it made it six years, which I've already guessed. I wanted to. But anyways, besides, so if we just simply move this back to the 10-year mark instead of six, why would that consequence have to leak, being on the charter?
Well, I think it wouldn't have to leak. I mean, it's at your discretion at this point because you are promoting making a change to the Article 19 of the charter commission. This isn't coming from a recommendation from a charter commission. This is a decision that this council is making. Okay? But again, it doesn't necessarily have to be the consequences there. You may think it's too restrictive of council, you know? So come up with another consequence, you know? Beginning day one, pay for city council will be docked per day until the charter commission is established. You know, I mean, to me at least, and I think it was, you know, back in 2007, we that there needed to be some sort of consequence so that the timeline would be on. And so that's what I'm suggesting consideration for, as you forward with this.
Isn't, isn't it their duty as councillors to follow the charter and appoint a commission? I mean, I think that's.
It's their duty, and in my opinion, back in 2006, '07, they failed that duty.
Right.
But, you know, so what's to say the next council is going to wait and go 12, 15, 20 years?
Maybe they overlooked it. I don't know. But I would think that someone on council would bring it up and just do the appointment. But the way it was written, it pretty well shut down your taxing authority and everything if you failed to act, so.
But there's no penalty here, no restriction if you act as stated, you know, within the timeline that's there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, a clear this public hearing closed. And this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down on the podium. You have five minutes.
Hello. First, I'm going to hand out some pictures and documents to each of you, and then I'll start speaking. Sir? Actually, I apologize, Angela. Can I have this one back compared to pictures? I'm here again tonight to speak about my yard being damaged by trucks coming down from Hoosier Magnets. Last time I spoke about this, it took about a month, and they sent their own private contractor to fix the situation. It took them a while, but in my opinion, they did all right. Recently, on 6/13, it happened again, and I witnessed it. It was pretty bad. You can look through the pictures I provided you. This is the incident report here, and I highlighted some, some statements in there. And the first one is, the officer involved states, "An uninvolved regular passenger vehicle was parked in the parking lot on the southwestern side of the building and had to maneuver around the same." First of all, that's not a parking lot down there. It's the end of Madison Avenue. It's a city street. There is no parking lot. And there was no such vehicle that existed during the time this incident took place. There was no vehicle parked there in that area. The next thing highlighted is the insurance company listed for the green semi-tractor, an insurance company and a code number. I reached out to them during this date. This company did not insure that semi-tractor. The third thing I highlighted was, "Code Officer Delmage advised patrol the property in question is city-owned property, and they do not wish to file any civil complaints at this time." I spoke with Mr. Delmage this morning. He told me that's not true. He did, in fact, state that he believed it was city property, which I already know. I already knew it was city property. That was never in question. I live on a corner. The property between the sidewalk and the road, or wherever your property ends in the road, is city property. I already knew that. Everybody knows that. Mr. Delmage told me he had nothing to do with the decision-making about whether civil complaints would be filed from the city or not, or how the city was going to handle the situation. He just basically said that he believed it was city property. The second incident report from 4/6/2023 is very short and sweet, but in a nutshell, the officer did a good job. That's what happened. The third page I gave you is Chapter 83 entitled Brush Grass and Weeds. You can check that out. Basically, it explains that I am responsible for taking care of the grass on that part of my yard, but nowhere does it say if a tractor-trailer drives on it and tears it all to hell and leaves huge chunks of sod in the road multiple times a year that I'm responsible to repair that or fix it because it is city-owned property. The morning this happened, the DPW director, a police officer, the manager from Hoosier Magnets, and another DPW employee came down. And there was a little meeting of the minds that took place away from me. And then Mr. Kelly, the manager of Hoosier Magnets, made it a point to state to me the reason this is all happening, because I'm an impersonable person. And the other city employees stood there and didn't say a word. They didn't say whether or not they agreed with them or didn't, but he said they just had a private conversation, and that's what was said. So I'm sure we're all capable of being impersonable at times. I could give perfect examples of when these employees were impersonable towards me at times, but I don't need to get into that. I don't need to sink to their level. You'll also see in the pictures I showed you a blue pickup truck I owned in the winter of 2018. I had it paid off. I worked hard to get it. A tractor-trailer backed into that and totaled it. Pushed it about three feet back towards my house, and it was parked in front of my house, not on the side where this current damage took place. And I went outside, and there was blue paint from the box of my pickup truck. It was caved right in all over the bumper of the semi, and the guy's trying to rub it off with his thumb and telling me that he didn't hit my truck. And the cops came, and well, they ended up paying for that. But unfortunately, it bent the frame, and the truck had to get totaled. And that caught, that hurt me. I had to replace a vehicle at that point in time. I could no longer drive it. That was the end of that. I don't know if you noticed or not, but there's a pattern that's happening here. This isn't a one-time thing. It's happened multiple times. And I didn't really want to bring it to this point, but this happened almost 15 days ago, a half a month ago. And it just so happens, the warehouse in which these trucks are going, there's a city police officer who's currently employed, whose grandfather owns it, and his father and mother run the place. The way I've been treated is ridiculous. Last Friday, I spoke on the phone with Andrea Smith, and she told me that it's my responsibility to fix this and get this taken care of. And we didn't have a very good conversation, and we've had not-so-good conversations in the past. But I didn't grow up on Procter Ave with a silver spoon in my mouth.
Enough. Your time is up anyway.
If this happened now, it would have been taken care of. Why are you so mad?
Five minutes is up. It's been up. I gave you a little more time, but.
Why are you so mad? Because you don't like what I'm talking about? Well, if you know what you told me, it was my responsibility to civilly sue the city to have the city's property repaired, Mike.
Fix it, find it.
Is this still my, is this still my responsibility to mow that grass like it says in the code? Because right now, there's not even any grass there on half of it.
Finish your conversation in your last two minutes.
All right. Well, thanks for not having me thrown out of here and putting the city up for another lawsuit. I will. I'll finish it at the end of the meeting.
Anyone else? Anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda. The claims as enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number 11-2023 in the amount of $734,461.30 and Library Warrant Number 11-2023 in the amount of $0 and Capital Fund Warrant Number 11-2023, the amount of $38,628.46 and Community Development Fund Warrant Number 11-2023, in the amount of $75.98 and Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 11-2023, in the amount of $0 as audited, be and same or hereby ordered paid. I so move. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Riche.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
We have one appointment tonight, and I make a motion to appoint Dale Sheldon to a four-year term on the Arts Council term to begin June 26, 2023, and then June 26, 2027. I so move.
I'll say. Boy, a pretty impressive resume by this gentleman. That's two very impressive resumes for the Arts Council. It's good to see these people stepping up. I'd like to see, really, in Augsburg, more, more, more activities, especially during the summer. You know, maybe Library Park, Green Bill area, whatever. Hopefully, hopefully, there's some recharge here going into it. By the sounds of that, that resume, he wants to do that, so strongly support this candidate.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Riche.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution to amend the 2023 budget, A5110.330, to include the receipt of CHIPS allocations in the amount of $442,314.95 with a 2022 accumulated rollover balance of $69,293.55. Pave New York allocation in the amount of $109,872.90. EWR allocation in the amount of $75,884.40. STR allocation in the amount of $165,065,651. STR allocation in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and sixty, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. POP allocation in the amount of seventy-three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty cents for a grand new total of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
Excellent.
So we budgeted for each of these, Shane, a certain dollar amount of anticipated funding and this just reflects what we actually received.
Yes, sir. We budgeted five hundred thousand cumulative with them all and then this is what we end up receiving.
Shane, well, I have you up here. Has there been anything resolved with the New York State and the grass on the other side of the twin bridges?
Yes, the state sent us some letters or information on it. I got with the city manager and we sent letters out to the homeowners and we cut it one time last week. The way we understand it from the state is that the homeowner is responsible for it, no different than in front of your house. Because it's actually directly, state highway comes all the way down State Street too. So it's like the same situation there.
Well, thank you. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution to enter into an agreement with Jefferson Lewis Hamilton Kirkwood Ronida Bosse's for drug and alcohol testing.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley? Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith. I'll move that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Who's estimate would that be?
That's from our grant application.
The two million, three forty-five?
Yes.
Pretty confident that'll be like the maximum or could be less or more?
That is based on a bid from a contractor and estimates for what we anticipate the additional characterization will be in the silos that I reviewed last. So it is based on actual numbers received from contractors. Now, keep in mind those were from the fall of twenty twenty-two, so we will have to put it back out to bid, but we do feel though this is good numbers going.
It's a, it's a great project for our city.
Can we get it done by the end of the year, I think?
We, we are, we've already started working on a work plan with paradigms of that we'll be able to get out and get started with the sampling the silos soon as we have funding available.
Somebody move this shit? Yep.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Andrea Smith, we'll do our, our next item of business also. I'll move that.
So the intent of presenting this this evening and asking for council approval is accepting this finalizing the report will allow us to close out these USDA grant that we have that funded the study and actually receive those funds back. And then it will also make any of the projects that are outlined in the report eligible for future grant applications, but right now they are not. So it's not suggesting that we are going ahead with any of the projects. It's just acknowledging that the work has been done and allowing us to close out the USDA grant.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Well, but also, but in the aftermath, just so it's out there too. It's, the project cost is twenty-four million, nine hundred thousand dollars. So like I said earlier. All on the water treatment plant. But this is almost like a duplicate coming back at you from wastewater treatment plant of thirty-five, thirty-five million. So, I mean, if you're looking at right now, the sewer costing a million dollars a year for the next thirty years and then we, then this happens, you're looking at another million. So you're raising one up for your sewage twelve point five last year. They're probably going up twelve point five this year. So your water down the road is going to mirror this, if not more. So that's, that's the reality of these, these numbers and these engineer reports. But it's a, it's a carbon copy of wastewater treatment plant. That's what's going to happen. That won't be it.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes, I'll accept it. But and also in there, the last little part of it, can I throw into is they had meters in for residences, so.
Our next item of business will also be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
Oh, I'll second it. I think it's, this is probably good for, it's definitely good for both parties and it'll, future development will be happening up in there. There's, it'll, it'll open the door. The more houses, you know, that we can get put up, the better.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Andrea is very busy tonight. She will be doing this one also.
So this is a resolution, seeking authorization to submit a CFA application that would fund ninety percent of the costs associated with updating and modifying the city zoning code to incorporate, specifically to incorporate smart growth principles. And the grant, we project that we would be applying for seventy-five thousand dollars and the city would need a match which would be paid for out of planning consultants line A eight zero two zero point five.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business is also read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution to serve as secret lead agency for the East David Street replacement project. So the, this is the resolution that essentially establishes, establishes city council as the lead agent, although we do have to wait thirty days to hear back from potentially interested parties. We've already started receiving responses that agreeing with the choice for the council to be the lead agency for this. This will finalize our work associated with the preliminary engineering report and then also it's a component that's necessary for the application for we ask the N W Q I P funds for the implementation of recommendations within the preliminary engineering report. We'll finalize this at the July twenty, twenty-fourth, city council meeting.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley? Approved.
And that brings us to old business. Does anyone have old business?
What's the status of the, the old Hackett's building?
We are working with the developer to put together a request for qualifications for an engineering consultant that will be the project manager for the developer, develop the scope of work that we're hoping, he's hoping to have out September timeframe so that the construction will start in the late fall through the winter. With an opening in the, around June of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, good. Excellent. And any other old business? This brings us to new business. Does anyone have some new business?
I have two items here. If council would like to give in the resignation of Counsel Kennedy, there is a need for council to accept that and then by resolution and then also and appoint the vacancy committee which would go forward with the search. So I can just pass those down. If you would like to take action on that this evening, that is staff's recommendation. There's a resolution and a charter.
I don't have any interest in acting on this tonight. So for the next meeting would be my pleasure, my preference.
It is okay. I would just ask that the court speak a little bit about this.
I just, I just want to point out to council that in accordance with C ten, C two, council is required to fill a vacancy within thirty days. So taking into consideration that the vacancy committee, once activated by council, would need to meet within five days, then there would have to be advertisement and a request for interested parties to submit their resumes to the members of the vacancy committee for a certain period of time, a reasonable period of time, allow the vacancy committee to review those submissions and they are required to make a recommendation of three candidates seven days prior to council voting. So with today being June twenty-six, to be in compliance with the thirty day appointment, the best, and stay on course with regular meetings and allow for all of that to happen. July twenty-fourth council meeting would be the date that the appointment could be made, just so everyone's aware. That's all.
I see no reason why that, why we don't move this and activate the vacancy committee as soon as possible.
Yeah, I agree. Let's get it going.
That's what the charter says we're supposed to do.
So this, this is a resolution to essentially do this, to activate the vacancy committee that would then we would do the requirements required. Anybody interested would send their requests throughout the two, one, or three months of the vacancy committee and we would ask them to have their recommendations so that the council could take action on the July twenty-fourth meeting. But you just, again, help keep the council cool.
I'd like to move that.
I'll second that.
So do you want to read this or?
Residency exists in the city council due to resignation. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby calls for the vacancy committee to convene in accordance with city charter, three section, C ten, to solicit names of persons eligible and willing to fill this vacancy and be further resolved that the vacancy committee is hereby directed to submit to the city council by July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, a list of three persons eligible and willing to fill this vacancy through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and be it further resolved that the city council hereby schedules the vote to fill this vacancy to take place during regularly scheduled July twenty-fourth, twenty-three meeting of city council. I so move. Why, why is it to the December thirty-first? That's what the charter says.
It would be placed on the November ballot for for someone running to fill, who would like to fill the remainder of the unfilled time on council's menu.
In accordance with the charter, C ten, C two E, if the vacancy occurs prior to July twenty-fifth, then council will make an appointment by vote through the end of the calendar year and it would be placed on the ballot in November for the remainder of the term. So it would be January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five will be what will be on the November ballot. And I have already notified Board of Elections, just so you're aware.
So there's four people running. You just can't say the top three take four and the last person?
I would rather not comment on that, sir. I would refer all questions to the Board of Elections, please.
Well, I think it opens up for possibly more candidates to run. But I do agree that it would be nice to follow the charter this time and, and you know, the, the three highest voter, counselors votes would take the three, four years and then the, the next one under them would take the two year.
Okay, so.
I just want to comment on Counsel Kennedy's resignation. Thanking her for her years of service to our community, serving as we all know is, can be times a thankless job, you know, but with that being said, I, I, I wish Counsel Kennedy and her family the best in their next adventure and I appreciate her years of service.
Counsel Kennedy was an attribute. Definitely a pleasure working with her. Very, very active in the community and on this board. It was a pleasure. I do wish her good luck as well.
So we got a, a motion, a second. So I guess it's time to vote on this. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
No.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
Is that the Bridge and Port Authority had inquired about connecting into the new Hubel Ten Forest name. And in accordance with the current IMA that does require approval from both the city as well as the village. They are interested in connecting their wastewater as well as potentially extending city water out to the terminal. And so we, before pursuing this, I just wanted to kind of bring this council's attention and get consensus that this is something that at least at a high level, again, no, no commitment that council is interested in investing staff time and pursuing to ultimately bring back a recommendation to council.
I, I would support it.
I think they ought to wait and make sure that the Hubelton line doesn't have issues before they start trying to tie someone else into it.
Um, well, they've still got their septic system.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, you know, we, we don't even know how, you know, this isn't even been turned on yet. And we've had issues on Franklin Street. I mean.
I think that will all come as, as we go forward. I think she's just asking for, to, to continue talks or discussion right now without necessarily approving.
Right, there's nothing to approve, just that they requested staff time, so I wanted to bring this to council's attention, something they're interested in. We did, the city did engage the Bridge and Port Authority at the outset of the conversation with Hubelton, but at that time, they chose not to enter into the IMA with Hubelton and the city. And so, but they were engaged early on in the system. The report initially did include their projected flows. So there are some positive things in that for both, both the, the village and the city.
Uh, what, what was the number? Was there a consensus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Was? Okay.
Well, I, I don't, I, I'm fine with it, you know, by engaging, of course.
Yep. Okay, and is that, that everything? And, again, yeah, yeah.
Oh, my, it was for.
That's it. And anyone else? Anything in there? Okay. And this brings us to citizens' participation?
No, I was just going.
What I got? I thought that's what I was asking. Anyone else? Any items for discussion?
So the item for discussion I have listed on the agenda is, is the Charter Review Commission, only because we did have the public hearing this evening and typically that would be followed by action from a resolution to amend the charter. I didn't feel like at the time council had asked for that amendment, that there was discussion with council. There has now been discussion, I think, in the public hearing and the comments from Mrs. Lee did also help to clarify that the intent of the current language is simply to charter council, this council, with appointing the Charter Review Commission. Not that the Charter Review Commission has to meet and has to present changes on or before the thirty-first of this, of December, just that they would have to be appointed. And so, I wanted to make sure that was clear to council. And, you know, if, if there was a desire to change, that we had an opportunity to talk through that before we actually presented that language to council. Because it is staff's recommendation that we go forward with appointing the Charter Commission. And the reasons for that are, are varied, but first and foremost, the city has really not been following in accordance, strict accordance with our charter since the onset of COVID-nineteen, when we made some pretty dramatic changes to our, our departments and our staffing. And so, it is my recommendation to go forward with the appointment and make some changes. Previous city manager, Stephen Jolly, had worked quite extensively with the clerk on some recommended charter changes that could be presented to the commission. The commission could obviously have their own thoughts about it, but I, I do think that appointing the Charter Commission is a good process to get started on, so that they can start taking action. If that isn't the desire of council, then, then we should have some discussions about how we are functioning versus how the charter reads, because we really should not be so far apart on those two. But we don't have all of the department types that we once had, and those assignments and duties have been restructured. And that's how we've been operating since twenty, early twenty twenty.
We already voted, though, on the proposed change, and we've now had a public hearing. And I think the vote was five to two, so there was a consensus. And that's, I was surprised it wasn't on the agenda as normal course of action.
So if that is the change that council wants, again, I mean, at the time that council went that direction, there was no discussion, and so I wanted to make sure that council clearly understood that the, the, the request was not to appoint the commission and then have recommendations presented in this fiscal year, that isn't the requirement and that's not the recommendation.
I, I didn't care for the, the way it had been done where, you know, you're gonna stop work on a, on the next council and punish them. It sounded, you know, and I, I for one am not for punishing the next council. It, you know, I know what that, we know what that feels like and so I'm not for it.
Okay, so we will get you a resolution to your action.
Um, okay, any other discussion?
Could you also, maybe as part of one of your remarks, point out some areas that were not, not followed on the charter specifically? So we can kind of take up this, where we, where we have that vote a little bit more in detail.
It was the Charter Commission, the previous Charter Commission recommended what to, a review or the commission to convene every, was it six years?
Yes.
From ten to six?
Yes, sir.
It shifted from ten. It used to be ten, then it shifted.
No, I remember it being ten, so they, and, and then it went to six, right? And that, the last time they met was two thousand seventeen?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So we're due.
Yes.
Don't want to violate the charter.
In accordance with the charter as it's currently written, yes, sir.
Move forward with the Charter Commission.
That's why. Huh? We had this conversation last week and we said, we said that ten years was good. We had the last meeting. I don't understand where we're going backwards now.
Because, because it sits at six now. I mean, if the Charter Commission comes out.
We're gonna change it to ten.
The resolution.
Council at the time actually voted to change.
To save the timelines, I, I, you know, I mean.
Council actually did vote to change it at the time, based on their recommendation. They, they had several recommendations. That was one of them. That was one that passed. Personally, at the time, I remember I voted against it. I wanted it to be strictly ten years, but it is what it is. And, you know, don't always get what we want.
Times look, it had been good, but ten years for a long time and so. But I, I do agree, if we can find some pointers of staying more on track and, and the interim, that's great.
I, I just, I'd like to be educated on, you know, the things Andrew's discussing.
If you did, I'll tell you, it, from time to time, if people pick it up and just read it, you, you'll see all the things that don't make sense. And it doesn't matter if it's the Charter administrative regs. One says something different about something else, so it's, it's, it's all on how you're gonna interpret it.
Yeah, some of it's a little vague.
Well, no, some just makes no sense. It depends on how much, if you want to write an opinion, you just throw in some legal jumbo and it'll, it'll sound like, okay, yeah, you can do that, but really you can't. But it's just, again, it comes down to whoever's interpreting at the time.
That's why I voted against the thing on the vacancy. I mean, it compels you to vote. It's like, you know, you have to vote. It's like, I, I just think it's kind of a messed up way of doing things.
Or I think we should fill the seat.
Well, I don't have any problem with that. I just think the charter's kind of messed up the way it articulates it. You know, it's just very cumbersome and then it compels you as a counselor to vote, even if you don't want to vote.
I think there's been other resolutions that you haven't voted, or you desire not to vote on as well, but we have to vote. They come before us, you know, so.
No, of course, if you would vote, pick three names that are from a, a committee that I don't know anything about. It's like, I, I just think the council should decide themselves. So there's, there's an example of a charter amendment. I just think it's kind of goofy the way it's set up.
One thing we should do is announce to the public who the members of the charter, or the, excuse me, the vacancy committee are, so that members of the public can submit their names who are interested.
Well, I would.
That's what the post is for.
But that will be in the press release that we're prepared to do, but the members of the vacancy committee are Doug Lauchler, Mark Nolton, and Laura Ashley.
Okay, that's what I thought. Very good.
Okay. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down on the podium. You'll have two minutes.
Hello again. The pictures I handed you earlier, I, I text messaged those pictures and several other ones to every council member and the mayor, except for Mr. Fisher. I didn't have a number I could text him to. I didn't get a reply from anyone. And anytime I've ever reached out to the governing body, at least one person from each side of the spectrum got back to me. Were you, any of you told not to contact me about this issue I brought forth earlier tonight by, um, anyone in the city, or did you just choose not to answer me?
I wasn't told and I didn't respond. I just, I wanted to look at.
You did. You did. You never responded to my text, but I.
Question for you.
Yeah. Yep.
And so, uh, I don't know if Kathy can stop the clock or not, but so when I was listening to you, you know, the problem is you, you don't want to be responsible for repairing the city property, right? According to the charter, it looks like you're responsible for repairing the, the damage that you didn't do, plus the ones, right?
Right, well, I've repaired it and I've lived there almost eight years, so I've repaired it enough times before I started to bring it.
So if somebody was doing that to my property, I might want over and say, hey, have you done that with the business owners?
Oh, I've reached out, I've reached out to the Langs, um, and, and to Hoosiers. Hoosiers threatened me with arrest. Um, Langs, Mrs. Lang apologized. She said she thinks that the trucking company should be responsible, their insurance, for fixing it. Um, Shane agreed with that same statement. So now, on the, on the paperwork I gave you, I said Ron determined that, but he didn't either. So now there would be one person that, that's made that determination, which I would believe be the Department of the City Manager, that I'm responsible for it.
Have you gotten a ticket by the same?
Have I gotten a ticket?
Yeah.
What would I receive a ticket for, Dan?
Like for, for not maintaining your.
No, not yet. No, I haven't yet.
So I'm just, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I think that it's, when I'm looking at it, I think it should be between you and the other folks, as long as you don't, not getting it for it, you know what I mean? And, and I think it can be resolved without having to come to council, but, you know.
Well, unfortunately, I've been trying to do this. I've reached out to the police, the DPW, the codes, and they couldn't resolve it, so here I am, you know?
I think the owners of the property are pretty much people, they'll probably take it. Honestly, it's just my opinion.
If it's city property, I think the city ought to take care of it.
Well, the thing that he's, he's, his issue is, is that.
Where I'm at, everyone's.
Rush, people are responsible for the area of their home.
Yeah.
So he doesn't want to get a ticket.
But if a truck comes over and, and.
And it's happening time and time again.
Right away and makes a mess, it certainly isn't the homeowner's property. They give it to your lawn, I mean, you would think that someone's gonna take care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So you ought to address it with either the trucking company or the, the.
Well, if it's city property and city owns it, then we, we're the ones that should be complaining and.
Yeah, I shouldn't have to. I was told by the city management, I would have to take them to civil court myself and it's city-owned property.
I don't think you have any standing if you don't own the property.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. I thought that was crazy, so this is why I'm here. Let's move on from that. You guys can discuss that amongst yourselves. Last time I asked for the gate to be open, it was like the day Mo Dean Baharia resigned. These gates were open for months. They were locked up. And I had asked last meeting for them to be open, and it was basically stated that the public could force the city into turning that property into a park somehow. Um, let's take, uh, the property Mr. Bracy is looking, gave you as an offer to buy on Franklin and Lafayette there, right by Counselor Fisher's house. I see people playing ball with their kids and stuff as I drive by there, people using that property. It's not fenced off. It's surplus property. Uh, what's the difference? You know, all I ask is for a gate to be unlocked and left open. I don't think that's insane. People should be able to walk down there, take their dog down there, do whatever they want if they want to, until that property gets developed or something finally happens with it. I just think that, that was a crazy answer, and I would like an example where that's ever happened in the state of New York where, uh, residents or people of any town or village or city were able to force the government into making a certain plot of land a park because there was access to it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come down?
Hello, I'm Dale Sheldon, three twenty-two Grant Street, and I just wanted to thank you all for appointing me this evening to the Arts Council. Looking forward to, to working on that, and thank you for your, your comments as well. You had mentioned work on programs over the summer, and specifically the, the library park. And we do already have something going now. We've started work on establishing a community theater. It's five oh one C three nonprofit. We're in the works of that right now. And part of that is every Saturday at the Library gazebo from noon to four, we have free workshops for playwriting and for actors workshop. Just for June and July, just as a starting off point to get, get local involvement.
Personally, more, more things happening in the community arts-wise, you know, I travel around the country, I mean, even small towns. They have art festival weekends and, and all up and down and just all kinds of crazy stuff happening, just a sense of vibrancy, you know?
Yeah.
Try and raise the social fabric of the community, if you will, you know, and can you send us an invite to the Arts Council meetings? I should probably already know when these are happening, but.
Absolutely, yeah. Once we get them going, I don't think they're currently happening, so.
You know, get in and, and hear at least what's, what's happening, if I could.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a schedule too, if, if I can make it, I'd like to just, I just want to see a sense of vibrancy and things happen. City, the last two, yourself and, and the last lady that.
CT, yeah.
You know, this is, this is good, so.
Thank you.
I want to see some things happen. I want to see the fish tournament come back. I was just talking to Don Meisner over the weekend about it, and, and we were talking about Michael Malone from that we had, our established, ready to roll there. And trying to get that back. Sorry if I cut in on your time.
Just one last, I just, my previous town in Fraser Park, California, is about a fifth the size of Augsburg. There's no reason why Augsburg can't have a thriving arts community. There we had a annual summer Shakespeare Festival and had two shows running in repertory through the summer. And they were always very successful. Can't do that here, or we can do that here as well, so, all right?
Oh, absolutely. I think, you know, there's a lot of talented people in this town.
Yeah.
You know, and, and our neighbors, Moorestown through Waddington, whatever.
Yeah, I want to reach out to the entire, not just Augsburg, but the entire north country and on the other side of, of the river as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone attending remotely?
The first individual is registered as Tanya Snyder, and I will unmute that individual now. Appears you are self-muted. Mrs. Snyder, it appears you are self-muted. Could be a technical issue, ma'am. I'm not sure how you want me to proceed. Oh, she has just put her hand down, so.
Anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised, no.
So this, uh, let's see, we do not have a need for executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I oppose.
Adjourn.